Why don't we call this meeting to order? Thanks, everybody. We're going to call this meeting to order. This is a special committee of the whole meeting to talk about gun safety. And first, coffee bar.
Trustee Hallwax.
Here.
Trustee Listner.
Here.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Here.
Trustee Underdunk.
Here.
Trustee Rubin.
Trustee Vrie.
Here.
President Rowan.
Here. We are live streaming this meeting and have posted the links to the livestream on the Village's social media pages. We'll make the recording available on the Village's YouTube channel following the conclusion of the meeting. The second item on the agenda is public comment, but this is public comment for those in attendance who want to talk about something other than non-agenda items. I'll ask you, and we're going to have a whole thing with public comment on the agenda, so wait for that. If there is a public comment on a non-agenda item, all comments are going to be limited to three minutes, and I'll tell you when you use up to three minutes. Are there any comments on non-agenda items? Then we'll turn to our agenda. And by the way, we want, an important part of our agenda is our village attorney, so I wanted to be sure he was here before we started, which is why we were a few minutes late. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight to the special committee of the whole meeting to talk about gun safety. On behalf of the village board, I welcome you. This is the village board's chance to hear from our village attorney, from our public safety director, and from all of you about what we can do and what we should do to help address the scourge of gun violence in our community. Since the terrible tragedy in Highland Park, I've had a number of opportunities personally to talk about guns and gun violence. At this point, my personal views are well-known, and I'm not going to repeat them now, at least not right now. But I would like to make a few brief points before we start. First, I am sorry, I am bitterly sorry about the tragedy in Highland Park and the recurring tragedies that have made this meeting a necessity. I think we all are. Second, a brief word about why the Glencoe Village Board is even entertaining a discussion about guns. I recognize that Glencoe trustees were not, and I was not, elected based on our political views on national issues like gun regulation. We were never even asked about our political views on national issues. I believe we were selected by the nonpartisan caucus and elected by the citizens of Glencoe because we displayed two things: a desire to give back to the community that we love and a commitment to common sense solutions. By and large, municipal government in Glencoe is not political. In my experience, people of good faith, regardless of their differing political views on national issues, can come together on common sense solutions. But one of the principal responsibilities of the village board is public safety. We have a public safety department. And the massacre in Highland Park has made it crystal clear, if it wasn't clear already, that none of us are going to be safe until we get a handle on guns and gun violence. So although, as a general rule, the village board will not get involved in national political issues, I believe that this case is one where we should make an exception. Third, and, you know, we're going to hear more about this tonight, I regret to say that Glencoe's ability to solve the gun violence problem is very limited. As you'll hear this evening, under Illinois law, we do not have the power to do it. And even if we had the power to act within our borders, which we don't, we are way too small. Cities, municipalities, towns, way too small. Our gun problems require national solutions or, in a minimum, statewide solutions. So I believe that not everyone in the village, and I think we may hear from people with differing views tonight, but I believe that a substantial majority of the residents of Glencoe, perhaps an overwhelming majority, support a variety of gun regulations, including a ban on assault weapons. But the village can't effectively ban them. So what can we do? In addition to the discussions we'll have tonight, our team has drafted a resolution on gun safety for the board to consider delivering to our state and national representatives, thereby amplifying your voices, our voices. Because tonight is a committee of the whole meeting, we're not going to act on that resolution tonight, but it has been placed on our regular agenda for consideration at our meeting tomorrow If you haven't read it, it's published online, and there are copies outside, and I encourage you to take a look at it. We hope to come forward with an appropriate resolution reflecting the views of the board and our citizens. We also hope to work with our state and federal representatives to make meaningful regulations a reality. And we also can look, and I hope to hear from all of you tonight, on where Glencoe can act. So we're here tonight to consider what we can do and to hear from you as to what you think we should do. Thank you again for coming tonight, for helping us to address the important issues of gun safety and regulation. And with that, I want to ask our village attorney, Steve Elrod, to present on the legal landscape what we can do.
Thanks, President Rowan, members of the board. The village, manage our village president, have asked me to provide background and context to the issue of gun control and specifically the ability, under the law, of the village of Glencoe to enact or to do anything. I think the president summed it up, but I'm going to go into much greater detail so that you can understand and appreciate exactly where the law is and what impact it has on the village. I'm doing this, it's going to be a little bit like a law school lecture. I don't apologize for that. I am, I do teach municipal law at Northwestern Law School, so I, that's just the mode that I'm in. But I also am approaching this with a little bit of experience. I am, as you know, the attorney for both Highland Park and Deerfield. Both towns have had assault weapon bans challenged in state and federal courts, so I'm going to provide you a little bit of the background of those cases, what we've learned, and I'm going to impart that to you. You're not alone in reviewing this issue. Our firm also represents Winnetka, and we gave a similar presentation in Winnetka, but I've tailored this for Glencoe, and it's going to go a little deep into the Supreme Court. Glencoe's in a unique position because of its non-home rule status. So with that background, let me start at the United States Supreme Court and take you through the evolution of that court and where it is today. But back in 2008, the United States Supreme Court, in a split decision, a five-four decision, issued the ruling, its ruling in the District of Columbia versus Heller, the Heller case. You may have heard about that case. It basically stands for the proposition that the Second Amendment does protect the right of law-abiding citizens to possess a handgun in their home for self-defense. And a couple years later, in the McDonald versus Chicago case, that proposition, that finding, was expanded not just to the District of Columbia, but to all of the states and municipalities throughout the country. But in the Heller case, that general proposition, there was what I call a little bit of a window, an opening, later known as the Heller exception. Justice Scalia was the author of that decision, and he said very clearly that the Second Amendment is not unlimited and should not be understood as conferring a right to keep and carry any weapon whatsoever, in any manner whatsoever, and for whatever purpose. He went on to say that the Second Amendment does not protect firearms that are dangerous, and I'm quoting here, "dangerous and unusual weapons and are not in the common use," and he cited such as M-16 rifles and other firearms that are most useful in military service. It was based on that, that the Highland Park case in 2013 was litigated. Highland Park adopted an assault weapon ban, I'll get to how they were able to in just a moment, but they adopted an assault weapon ban in 2013. It was challenged under the Second Amendment by the Illinois NRA and a local resident by the name of Dr. Ari Friedman. It became known as the Friedman versus Highland Park case. In that case, the Seventh Circuit accepted Highland Park's argument that there was an exception created in the Heller case that allowed for the regulation, or in Highland Park's case, the ban on assault weapons, because it fell into that window that Justice Scalia mentioned. That case was attempted to be appealed to the United States Supreme Court, and importantly, the Supreme Court, in legal terms, denied a writ of certiorari, meaning they denied the appeal. They did not, they said that they were not interested in taking the case, which meant that the Seventh Circuit decision, the United States Court of Appeals for the Seventh Circuit decision, upholding Highland Park's ordinance, stands. And Glencoe is in the Seventh Circuit, so that is the law of the land right now. I will note that there was a dissent filed in the United States Supreme Court case denying cert, or denying the ability to appeal, and that dissent was filed, was written by Justice Clarence Thomas, who felt that, in a very strongly worded dissent, that the, he felt that the Second Amendment should be expanded to include assault weapons. He was in the minority in the court in 2017 when that decision was made. Fast forward to this past July, when the United States Supreme Court entered its decision in a New York case, New York State Rifle Association versus Bruin. That case actually went and took the Heller decision and expanded it to allow for Second Amendment protections of firearms, specifically handguns, outside of the home, beyond just the home. But there were some significant points, two very significant points, from this Brewer decision. The first is that it dealt with the concealed carry laws in Illinois, I'm sorry, in New York. Importantly, New York's concealed carry laws are very different than Illinois, the Illinois concealed carry laws. So the crux of the decision really doesn't apply in Illinois. But the second and more important part is the court clearly gave its, it tipped its hat as to where it stands with respect to the Second Amendment. It indicated that it is willing to expand its consideration of the Second Amendment. It said in that case it's going to place the burden on government to demonstrate that any challenge regulation is consistent with the historical tradition of firearm regulation in order for that regulation to stand. So it sort of stood out as a warning as to where this court, this new majority of the Supreme Court is with respect to the Second Amendment. Now, take all that and put it in context in Illinois. First, I want to note that all municipalities in Illinois are creatures of the state. Some municipalities have home rule authority, which means that they have some autonomous ability to make regulations. But ultimately, even home rule municipalities can be curtailed in their actions, or the proper legal term is preempted, in their actions by the state of Illinois. And that's important in the firearm regulation context. The state of Illinois has significantly limited the ability of governments to regulate firearms. It did so back in 2013. And in 2013, the state was in an interesting position. It was the last of all 50 states to adopt a concealed carry act. It did so only after the state was challenged in federal court, and pursuant to a consent decree, Illinois agreed that it would adopt a concealed carry law. At the time, there was a movement to attempt to get the state to adopt a statewide ban on assault weapons and attempt to regulate handguns. The state went in the exact opposite direction. And in an amendment to what is known as the FOID Act, the Firearms Identification Card Act, the state of Illinois made it very clear that it and it alone has the ability to regulate handguns and assault weapons. It basically stated that it has exclusive powers and functions on these matters. And it said that under no circumstances can any municipality adopt any regulation, specifically any, I'll read specifically, no municipality can regulate license, possess, adopt an ordinance for the regulation, licensing, possession, and registration of handguns and ammunition for handguns. And then it went on to say, no municipality can adopt a regulation, the regulation, possession or ownership of assault weapons. So it made it very clear that the state has exclusive powers, and it said that no municipality can adopt regulations concerning handguns or assault weapons. But then it went on to say, however, with respect to assault weapons, any home rule municipality that has an assault weapon regulation or ban in effect is basically grandfather. And further, any municipality that, within 10 days of that statute, of the adoption of that statute, any municipality that adopted a regulation would be allowed to keep that regulation. And then it went on to further say that if you adopted a regulation within those 10 days, you have the ability, you municipality have the ability to amend that regulation at a later date. So various things occurred. First, the city of Chicago and Cook County both had assault weapon bans in place at the time. The counties is known as the, is known as the Blair-Holt Act. That ordinance was adopted prior to 2013, and so it was allowed to stand. Other of your neighboring towns took various levels of action. The city of Highland Park, within that 10-day window, did adopt an assault weapon ban. That was the one that was challenged, and Highland Park prevailed. The village of Deerfield adopted a regulation on the safe storage or and registration of assault weapons in 2013. And then in 2018, it amended that ordinance to make it a full ban. Deerfield was challenged, not under the Second Amendment, but just under state law about whether its actions in 2018 constituted a mere amendment or a brand-new ordinance. Deerfield ultimately prevailed, and its assault weapon ban now stands. So where does this put the village of Glencoe? Well, notwithstanding the actions of its municipalities, Glencoe, as you noted, President Rowan, has very limited options. As a non-home rule unit of government, it's unlikely that Glencoe could have done anything regarding assault weapons in 2013, even if it wanted to and was able to act within 10 days. That the, the non-home rules, as I indicate, non-home rule municipalities need specific authority from the state to act. And no such authority was granted in 2013. Rather, that 2013 action by the state legislature was a limitation on authority. So it essentially was limited to home rule municipalities. And now, no municipality, home rule or not, can take any action on the regulation of either handguns or assault weapons unless, with respect to assault weapons, they did so within that 10-day window. I do note that Glencoe is located in Cook County, and theoretically, the Cook County assault weapon ban is effective within the entire county, including Glencoe. But there is a question of enforcement with the Bay and with the Cook County Sheriff's Police. One final note, somewhat breaking, but probably not surprising news. Just last week, the city of Highland Park was one of several governments throughout the country against whom a new lawsuit was filed in federal court. We'll be defending that case, but it was just, literally just filed last Friday. That lawsuit challenges Highland Park's assault weapon ban again, under the Second Amendment. While the Seventh Circuit opinion still stands, there is no opinion at the United States Supreme Court level. Clearly, the strategy is to get back to a position to be appealed to the Supreme Court, with the hope by the plaintiffs in this case that a new composition on the court and Justice Thomas in the majority would accept the appeal and then take the case and consider it. So there's where the law stands. I'm sorry if I went on longer than you hoped, but I wanted to give you that background and context, and I'm happy to answer questions if anything is not clear.
What I'd like to do is ensure our questions before we get to the rule consideration of all of the government. So what I'd like to do next is to ask our public safety director, Harry Lou Dowsley, to send concern to the program, and know it's been doing.
The topics we're starting to find will be the ULR, firearms, and program. The topics we're starting to find will be the ULR, critical incident training, initiatives at the end, program. We also support the safety and secure firearm storage. We share now social media, and then our U News. Again, this is a voluntary program. We also have a firearm destruction program. We also have a firearm destruction program.
We also have a firearm destruction program. Again, we've had this for many years. Residents can turn in unwanted ammunition and firearms to the public safety department. We, in turn, take that to our regional crime laboratory for destruction. I put some statistics on there, and unfortunately, it's not used very often here in Glencoe. So again, I'm hoping not talking about it this evening and focusing on it on our website and our social media, that people will take advantage of this program if they have some unwanted firearms in their house, so we can help them dispose of them properly. And again, there's information on our website, and you can call an officer at any time to drop off a weapon or ammunition, and we hope that people take advantage of that program. What we've been focusing on the most in the last few months and basically throughout my tenure here is standing partnerships with our partner agencies throughout Glencoe, whether it's the Park District, School District 35, the library, Family Service at Glencoe and our faith community. We meet regularly, and we collaborate on proactive plans to support safety initiatives. We continuously review safety protocols and share information to ensure safety and security of their facilities and grounds. And just this past July, we had a specific active threat training for all those organizations, and we're going to continue to provide that training and have drills throughout the year. In fact, many drills are scheduled right now, and we're going to continue to do that throughout the school year. Also, we have conducted and will continue to conduct active shooter training for all of our officers at our high target locations, school district buildings, park district buildings, library, things like that. And we continue to be a visible presence in and around the schools every day through our walk and talk program. Our officers are there every day, in and out of the buildings, interacting with the students and teachers. And again, we're there to have positive interactions with the students, so they're comfortable with police officers, and also as a way to reinforce some of the safety protocol that the school has in place. We're also joining our partner entities to promote the See Something, Say Something campaign. And just as a quick public safety announcement, I'm urging all Glencoe residents to please lock your cars, do not leave your keys in your cars, and lock your homes. As you've seen in the news, we're not immune to having violent criminals in our town trying to create more crimes and havoc, so if you do simple things like that, you'll reduce the chance of yourself being a victim. It also makes the community safer for you, your neighbors, and my public safety officers. We've also gotten a reciprocal reporting agreement with District 35. We've had it for years. It was last updated in 2018. Basically, that agreement lets us share information regarding criminal activity with school employees or school students, but the real focus is on, you know, students involved in acts of violence or threats against others. In fact, at District 35, we're part of a threat assessment team. We meet regularly to make sure that we are both aware of what's going on with the student population, make sure that we can keep them as safe as we can. The village board will also be considering a reciprocal reporting agreement with Nutria Township High School at tomorrow night's board meeting. Very similar, focusing on the same things, acts of violence, threats to others, and weapons offenses, things like that. We also have a lot of public education and outreach. We have firearm safety on our website, home safety surveys, crime prevention tips, tips for preventing home and car burglaries, tips for preventing carjacking. Another thing, Smart 911, emergency notification system. If you haven't signed up for that, please do. It'll allow you to receive emergency notifications as things are happening to make sure that you're fully aware of what's going on in town. We also use our Village E News and social media. We provide some periodic firearms and general safety messages, specific crime notifications and awareness messages go out. And our community partners, we're sharing our information with them so we can extend our community reach to their databases and notification lists. And coming soon, we're going to have new technology to assist us with crime detection, basically automatic license plate reader cameras in town. We have two were installed last week. They're not functioning yet because we got to get our training done. Those allow us to be notified when a car that is stolen, a report is stolen, or is known to be involved in criminal activity, it notifies our officers instantly so that we can go to the area, try to intercede them, because frankly, they're in town only to commit more crimes. And if we can get there sooner to either stop them from committing other crimes or chasing them out of town, that's beneficial for everyone, so that technology will be very helpful to us in the future. That's all I have on the actual presentation, but I would be happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you very much. And again, I want to thank the Secretary for, I'd like to wait here for the public to talk.
Very good.
Okay. Well, that was the information that the village could present to the public as to what is the lay of the land, what's possible, one of the roadblocks. So what I'd like to do now is open this up for comments from the public. And what we've done is we have a, we have signup sheet. I have a number of people who've signed up to speak, and what I'm going to do is call them in order. And anybody who's speaking has three minutes. We'll try to keep track of that, except if you're speaking for a group and on your honor, other people in the group were not going to come up and then use their three minutes, then you can have a little more time. So with that, what I'd like to do is, and I'm just going to call in order, first Rachel Zimmerman. And come on up to the microphone. It circles says you're speaking in behalf of yourself, notwithstanding the shirt.
Yes. Well, we are both ourselves and with mom's band, but as a mom, I'm speaking. So hi. Our chapter has over 2,400 members that our residents of Weneka, Willmette, Northfield, and Glencoe. For those of you unfamiliar with Moms Demand Action, we're a grassroots organization that advocates for sensible gun policy and work at the local level to keep our communities safe. Recently, we've been focused on the issue of guns, of safe gun storage. Why this particular issue? Well, I'd like to imagine that tonight, in an alternate universe, we somehow managed to pass every law that has been discussed lately with respect to preventing gun violence. Yet, we would still wake up tomorrow in the same exact world we live in tonight. The world that allowed a school shooting in 1988, right down the street from us at Hubbard Woods Elementary School, followed by countless other mass shootings, Sandy Hook, Las Vegas, Parkland, Buffalo, Uvalde, and now again, in our very own backyard, Highland Park. Why is this? Well, it's because we still have, at minimum, 350 million guns in our community. Guns that we need to ensure are stored securely, which means unloaded, locked, and separate from ammunition. Because we know that three-fourths of school shooters got their gun from the home of a parent or close relative, because nearly 350 children under the age of 18, nearly one every day a year, unintentionally shoot themselves or someone else, and 70% of these incidents take place inside the home. And because another 700 children die by gun suicide each year, most often using a gun belonging to a family member. In this reality, we need to acknowledge that 44% of adults live in homes with guns in America, and 54% of them don't lock them up. In Illinois, just in 2021, our state accounted for 24% of all gun sales in the entire United States. And yet, we only account for 4% of the population. So the landscape here has changed quite a lot, and we need to respond accordingly. That is why we thank the village for hosting this listening session tonight. We know that even in this tight-knit community, we cannot assume our safety, and that's why we ask the village for the following. First, to continue to build a culture of secure gun storage in Glencoe. This includes ongoing communication and public education. We know that a key to preventing gun violence in our community is to ensure guns that are already here are being stored securely. Second, like Highland Park has done and just last night Willmette, we ask the village to pass a resolution calling for the state and federal governments to ban all semi-automatic high-capacity ammunition cartridges and magazines and body armor. Glencoe's support of the ban, along with our North Shore neighbors, will be heard loudly by our state and federal governments. And lastly, we ask that you require all Glencoe residents to register their firearms and require safe storage, as it is Illinois law that a firearm in a home with a child under 14 is securely stored. And renew their registration annually. This is similar to what we already do for pet owners and home alarm owners in the village. A simple procedure and requirement that can significantly improve the safety of our community. And if we do not legally have the ability to do so, we ask that the village asks our neighboring towns to do so, in effect, making us all safer, given that we share a community and a high school. I appreciate your time, and thank you for holding this session.
Thank you, Ms. Zimmerman. Okay, next, Miles Mendoza, speaking on behalf of yourself.
Thank you all for being here. Thank you for our public service officers providing Glencoe the safety it deserves. Very sad day to have to stand before you following a mass shooter nobody wants. Howard, I think you said it eloquently. There's a list of things that we can control, things that we can do, and there's a list of things that we can't. I think what I would like to present today is the notion that there are some things that we can control and perhaps that we're not. There, the vast, vast majority of mass shooters in America are lonely, white, men. They're isolated, or oftentimes disenfranchised from their communities. And while there's exceptions to the rule, certainly in Weneka there was with the women, again, vast majority lonely, not always white, sorry, lonely men, lonely men. There are members of the Diversity and Inclusion Committee here today, you know, and I know that you have good intent in trying to create a community that welcomes all. But I would keep in mind that in the list of things that we can control, I think we can make sure that we provide the most welcoming community, so that we don't have isolated, lonely individuals who are seizing what hate on the internet, getting trapped in their own echo chambers. So I would just encourage our town, and again, our community, our community Inclusion Committee, to do all that they can to make sure that all feel welcome, and don't feel separated and lonely. Perhaps, perhaps we can prevent just one of these mass shootings here in Glencoe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mendoza. Next, speaking on behalf of himself, Mitch Malamet. Mr. Malamet.
I'm going to go over to sit at the bottom of this presentation. What's the slide?
Thank you. Okay. Next, speaking in behalf of a group, Hillary Scott. Hillary's the chair of an official Glencoe group, although I'm not positive yet if that's the group you're talking about.
No, I'm speaking on behalf of myself, although I am a volunteer with Moms Demand, and I do chair the Glencoe Council for Inclusion in Communities. So thanks for the shout-out, Miles, and I couldn't agree more. That's certainly our role here in the community. So yes, my name is Hillary Scott. I'm the mother of two teenage boys and a resident of Glencoe. I'd like to take my three minutes or less to speak with you all about the connection between common gun sense, common sense gun safety, storage, and teen suicide. As many of you are likely aware, the US is the only country in the world that has more civilian-owned firearms than it does people. Over 13 million households have both children under 18 and guns. According to a 2017 study by the American Academy of Pediatrics, 39% of parents with guns in their households said their children don't know where the gun is stored. However, as part of that same study, 75% of children surveyed said they do know where the gun is stored. And of the 75% of children, 36% admitted to handling the gun without their parents' knowledge. Now, on another recent study, what's the number of high school students who have contemplated suicide in the last year at nearly 1 in 5? As frightening as that sounds, the good news is that most children who attempt suicide don't die. Only 2% of young people who attempt suicide with a drug overdose are successful, but that number climbs to 90% when young people use a gun in their suicide attempt. So kids' access to guns in their households really does matter. Safely storing guns should be a basic component of the social contract, and it is one that could have a huge impact on public safety, after all gun violence is now the leading cause of death for children in America. So on behalf of myself and also our 2,500 Moms Demand Action members, I'd like to thank the village of Glencoe for listening and considering a resolution that will continue to build on a culture of secure gun storage in Glencoe.
Thank you very much, Ms. Scott. Next, Kylie Rudd.
Hi, my name is Kylie Rudd. I'm a mom to three kids, a second grader and a kindergartner at South School, and a four-month-old baby. I've been a Glencoe resident for two years, and I'm also a Moms Demand Action volunteer. As Rachel mentioned earlier, our local group has been focused on the issue of safe gun storage and safety in our schools for several months now, beginning with a fantastic meeting that I had with Dr. Wang and Dr. Zangetti in April, where we learned how much effort goes in between D-35 and the community partners. So I want to thank everybody here for that. On May 24th of this year, a gunman shot and killed 21 victims, including 19 children and two teachers, and wounded at least 17 others at Robb Elementary School in Uvalde, Texas. 34 years earlier, in our backyard, eight-year-old Nick Corwin lost his life in a school shooting in Hubbard Woods. Countless other lives have been impacted by school shootings alone in these 34 years. School is the last place where our kids should worry about gun violence. Our children deserve better. For the last 20 years, students, educators, and parents have lived with increasingly frequent school shootings. School gunfire incidents went from an average of 49 incidents per school year in 2013 to 193 incidents of gunfire on the grounds of preschools and K-12 schools this past year. There are several important facts to understand about school gun violence. First, approximately 20% of gunfire incidents on school campuses are unintentional. Someone brought a gun with no intention of it going off, but it did. Second, 56% of those discharging guns on school grounds have a connection to the school, and when you consider an active shooter, that number nears 80%. According to the gunfire on school grounds dataset, at least 60% of school-age shooters were current or former students. And finally, and maybe most importantly, the guns used in school shootings generally come from home or the home of family and friends. The US Secret Service has undertaken targeted school violence research and covering nearly 40 years of incidents. They found that three-quarters of school shooters acquired their firearm from home or the home of a close relative, and it was revealed that nearly half of the shootings of firearm was easily accessible and not securely stored. We need meaningful actions, not just in our schools, but also in our community and our country, to help keep our schools and surrounding communities safe. Actions that address what we know about gun violence in America's schools. It's time for our leaders to adopt a multifaceted approach that provides school communities with the tools they need to prevent gun violence. This is why we're asking the village of Glencoe to continue to build a safe, a secure gun storage culture in Glencoe. First, let's pass a resolution for the state and federal governments to ban all semi-automatic weapons, high-capacity ammunition cartridges, and magazines and body armor. The massacre in Uvalde and Highland Park would be almost unthinkable without an assault-style weapon. Just last night, as we mentioned, our neighbors in Willmette unanimously passed a resolution banning the sale and possession of assault-style weapons. And second, let's pass an ordinance that would require all Glencoe residents to register their weapons in the village, similar to the procedures we have in place for vehicle owners, pet owners, and home alarms in the village, and require safe storage of firearms and renewal of their registration annually. This would force residents to check their firearms at least annually to ensure they're in the same safe place they left them and they haven't been tampered with. These ordinances will help keep our children and our village safe. Thank you for your time tonight and for bringing our community together to discuss such an important issue.
Thank you for your presentation. Next, Jennifer McShane.
Hi, as you mentioned, I'm Jennifer McShane. I'm also with Moms Demand. I'm a fellow data lead and active member for four years of Moms Demand. I'm also a six-year Glencoe resident, and I have two young kids, eight and four. So I obviously have a vested interest in keeping public areas, especially schools and family events such as parades, safe. The village of Glencoe can step up to help improve safety with further education and awareness of red flag laws, otherwise known in Illinois as firearms restraining orders. As Chief Hornstein of Weneka said, "These laws were passed to help identify individuals at risk of harming themselves or others, and temporarily removing firearms from their reach." This is a critical component in preventing mass shootings and school shootings, as a perpetrator is so often known by law enforcement, by law enforcement, social workers, and family members prior to a devastating event. These laws are underutilized in Illinois, in large part because people don't know about them, but they are a critical resource that can save lives. In the wake of the incident in Highland Park, I would hope that our community would be thoughtful and step up quickly to lead on these issues. For those who don't know, red flag laws do the following. Red flag laws temporarily remove firearms from people who are a threat to themselves or others. And in Illinois, it was passed in 2019, called the Firearms Restraining Order, or otherwise known as FRO. How it works is that family members, persons who share a common dwelling and law enforcement can file a petition requesting the FRO. There are two types of FROs. An emergency FRO that will immediately remove weapons for two weeks, and a longer-term FRO that will remove weapons, oh, I'm sorry, that will remove weapons from a person for six months. Ultimately, we need to do better about educating ourselves, our community, and our law enforcement officers about red flag laws. Why? Because red flag laws reduce firearm suicides and reduce mass shootings. There is an incredible opportunity to use this law, but it needs to be used. In Connecticut, which has a quarter of our population, 200 petitions for an FRO were filed in 2020. In Florida, which has less than double our population, in Illinois, had 2,309 petitions filed. And in Illinois in 2020, we only did 19. We need to do better. We need to educate ourselves about red flag laws, spread awareness, and if you think someone may be a threat to themselves or others and has fire alarms, please alert the authorities. I ask that Glencoe put forth the effort to help educate the community about these laws in the interest of our greater public safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation, Ms. McShane. We don't have anyone else who's signed in to speak, but if anyone else has something they would like to say before we turn to the part of this where the board talks about it. Yes, come on up, tell us who you are.
My name's Michael Pope. I'm a retired lawyer, but I'm here as a 40-year veteran, a citizen of Glencoe. I am very impressed by this program, with the moms have been forth. I had never heard of the safe storage plan that we have at Glencoe until months ago, at one of their meetings. What you can, I'm 100% in favor of this resolution. I hope you pass it tomorrow. In the meantime, though, let's do a better job of telling the community about the idea of this safe storage. Because it's so practical, it doesn't require mandatory legislation, it's something that we don't, we don't know. If I've lived here all this time, I kind of pay attention. I've never heard of this program, and I think it's very good because it's effective and brings safety to the house where all these guns are sitting. So in the meantime, pass this first, but in the meantime, let's think about better publicizing some of the good things we already do in Glencoe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Hi, I'm Allison Sheaowitz. I'm a mother in the community. I have two children, one at Central and one at Nutria. Thank you for taking the time to hold this meeting. I greatly appreciate it. To echo the sentiments of some of the other people that spoke, I completely agree that it's so much about education. I had prepared this whole speech about an assault weapons ban, but after hearing that education about why we can't do that in this community, I'm going to forego that and say instead that I feel like education, changing the nature of the programming, you know, the whole see something, say something is wonderful, but what about getting to the, getting to people before it gets to that point? Speaking to the inclusion, to the welcoming, to our children, and making our children be more inclusive in saying hello to kids that they wouldn't normally say hello to, or programs in the schools that force kids to be together that may not always be together or may not be in their friend group is extremely important. The red flag education, it's unbelievable how many of these crimes and these incidences could have been prevented if the red flag laws were enacted. And a lot of that is because people don't know about red flag laws. So an education around that, I think it's all of our responsibility to be a part of this and be part of the messaging in this community. And I really feel like, you know, we have to register our pets, we have to register our alarms, we have to register our cars. Why shouldn't we have to register a firearm that can cause more damage than all of those things combined? So I strongly feel as though Glencoe should do something of, similar to that, if possible. I don't know if that falls within the legal ramifications of what we can do. And I will say that we have the luxury of standing up here and talking about gun violence in a way, I'm not sure if it's affected people in this room, so I don't want to speak for anybody else, but it has not faithfully directed, directly affected me. But I live in fear every day that my child is going to get shot at school, that someone I love is going to get shot at a movie theater or a mall. And who wants to live like this? I don't want to live like this. I know we all don't want to live like this. And when you meet the survivors, which I have in the seven or so years that I've been a gun violence prevention activist, you hear the stories of these people whose lives have been completely shattered by gun violence, who will never be able to live a similar life to what they had before that, and who every day deal with unbearable pain that we cannot even imagine. In our backyard, a child will never walk again because of what happened on July 4th. There is a child that is going to be raised without parents. And we allow this because we have easy access to guns in this, in this country, in the state, easy access to semi-automatic weapons. And it just absolutely baffles me that we, as a community, aren't marching in the streets, protesting, demanding more from our government. And I will say that, you know, we have a lot of volunteers that come and help in the gun violence prevention movement. I encourage you all to be a bigger part of the narrative and a bigger part of these groups. You know, after these shootings, you get a lot of people that come out and they want to participate, and then, you know, as time goes on, those numbers of people dissipate. So I encourage you to think about all the people whose lives have been shattered by gun violence. When you think about, oh, should I go to the meeting? Should I, you know... marching in the streets protesting, demanding more from our government. And I will say that, you know, we have a lot of volunteers that come and help in the gun violence prevention movement. I encourage you all to be a bigger part of the narrative and a bigger part of these groups. You know, after these shootings, you get a lot of people that come out and they want to participate, and then, you know, as time goes on, those numbers of people dissipate. So, I encourage you to think about all the people whose lives have been shattered by gun violence. When you think about, oh, should I go to the meeting? Should I, you know, protest in this march? Should I sign my name on this petition? Should I be a part of this new program in Glencoe that's going to encourage kids to talk to each other or talk to more kids than they would, they would have thought to previously? I encourage you to think about those people, those people who will never, their lives will never be the same, and to stay committed and stay present in this movement, because, you know, as we saw in Highland Park, it could be any community. None of us are safe anymore from gun violence. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Come on up, tell us who you are. And I'll start the clock. Everybody's been doing great, by the way, there now.
Thank you for recognizing me. My name is Margot Flanagan. I am a Glencoe resident. I've been here for around 23 years, and I just have something on my mind. You mentioned home rule status, and I remember in 2013 when we missed that window because we were not a home rule community. And I'm wondering if the board would consider perhaps revisiting the idea of making Glencoe a home rule community, just so that we don't miss any more windows. I realize that a lot of these new laws are written to, you know, take away or preempt home rule authority, but if there ever is a chance that we can use that authority to prevent any sort of harm to our community, I wouldn't want to miss it again, so I ask that the Village Council consider that.
Thank you very much. Anyone else before, yeah?
I actually wasn't going to speak at all tonight because...
You're going to tell us who you are first.
Oh, sorry. I'm Lauren Harper. I am lucky enough in this community actually to lead Moms Demand Action, so I'm lucky enough to work alongside all these amazing women who spoke so eloquently on so many different topics tonight. I hope it feels like a very broad-based education on what we've been working on, but actually tonight, I actually want to just talk on behalf of Students Demand Action. One of the things that I find in the work that I'm doing leading this group is I get to work alongside a lot of kids at New Trier, and just last week, I was lucky enough to be asked by Jan Schakowsky to do a listening session, and we invited a bunch of the New Trier kids alongside some Glenbrook kids and some Niles kids, like kids from all around Jan Schakowsky's area. And she asked everybody to go around the room and speak about their experiences in school and how they feel about whether or not they're safe. And I just think it's important to express to you that the stories that these kids told were nothing short of heartbreaking. There are kids that go into every single classroom and look for the place that they're going to hide, and then they think to themselves, what if that place is taken before I get there? And there are kids who are in classes with seniors who think to themselves, that student is over the age of 18, and they can legally obtain a firearm, and they can put it in their backpack and might be sitting right next to me. The fear is palpable. There were tears, almost without exclusion, in every child who presented at this meeting. And so, I, when we went to the Weneka listening session, we actually had some of the kids come and speak on behalf of their experiences as high school students and as middle school students, and they said to me afterwards, gosh, you know, I'm just so disappointed, I feel like nothing's going to change. I missed a dance recital tonight, I missed a this, I missed a that, I'm pissed that I'm here, and I don't think anything's going to happen, and so I promised myself that I wouldn't invite them here tonight, because they deserve more from us. And I understand there are a lot of legal limitations to what we can do, but I know that we can do better than we're doing right now, because our kids deserve more, and we cannot continue putting the burden of lockdown drills and expecting them to go home and talk to their parents about whether or not their guns are safely stored. It's just, the burden should be on us as adults, and I feel like there is room for us to improve what we're doing, so I just hope that, that we can do it. And I thank you for opening this session up, and we really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else? All right, well, thank you. Let me just say, it was very important to us and I think the community to hear from you. I learned, you know, I've been looking at this, but I learned a bunch tonight from all of you, I think the rest of the board members did. Not all, we have a resolution that's been drafted that we're going to talk about and maybe tweak. I'm not positive whether we'll be able to incorporate all the ideas, but that, you know, we could do other resolutions. So, thank you to everybody, and now I'd like to turn to the next part of this session, which is for the board to talk amongst ourselves about assault rifles and other gun regulations and gun safety and storage and what have you. And let me just start with one thing before I turn over to the rest of the board. One of our board members, Gary Rubin, is not here. He had a business commitment that's made him unavailable tonight, tomorrow, but he asked me to say that he is a gun owner, he has a card so he can carry a gun, and he supports the regulation and the commentary that we're talking about. So, and he wanted that set because he couldn't be here. So, with that, board members, there's a, there's a resolution we've all looked at, there are comments we've heard, and I, you know, I would welcome your thoughts, so.
I'll start. First off, I think we all heard very clear direction tonight. I think it's incumbent upon us now to take every action we can. I think the message here was a lot of reasonable suggestions, a lot of civility. Also, I really appreciate the engagement of everybody coming tonight, expressing your points of view. It's wonderful. It was very civil and educational, and it's been the right way to do it, in my opinion. So, I think we have a very clear voice here to follow, some vision set out in our resolution, and I don't think this should be a one-off. I think as the, some of the folks suggested, this is largely education. We also do need to point out more about the things we are doing, as one gentleman mentioned, for example, our welcoming commitment that we passed a few years ago. I hope everybody in this room knows about that, and if not, takes the moment to read it and sign up for it. So, my feeling is we should get moving as quickly as we can. I think the, the direction and the voice is clear.
Thank you. Like I said, all the trustees have had a chance to look at the draft resolution, so, and, you know, we, not everybody said it was okay, but, you know, we've all looked at it, we could tweak it. Let me just say one other thing, too. In, in village government, we know that just because there's one side in a room, doesn't mean that there isn't another side not in the room. And sometimes, the room is filled with people, and we sort of suspect, yep, they had the energy to come here, but there's a solid majority that feels the other way. Here, there was a, you know, a clear, sort of, approach by everybody here, subject to one sort of dissenting vote, but I, you know, I think that what's in this room actually reflects the overwhelming majority of people in Glencoe, so, you know, I would be comfortable moving forward. Dudley, did you, I thought you were...
Well, I have, I have a question for our city attorney, if I may.
Good.
First of all, thank you all for coming tonight. It was very enlightening and helpful. I, too, have been searching for ideas as to what we can do to regulate guns, and I had a quick question for the village attorney, and that is, what areas of the village would be covered or be considered gun-free areas? For instance, the room we're in now, our parks, the streets, what, what could we cover or don't we cover?
So, Illinois adopted a regulation that allows the declaration of, at first, it, it sets forth certain areas that are gun-free, and yes, the village hall is one.
Can you say yes?
And the, and schools are others, and establishments can declare their premises gun-free with a sticker that could be prominently placed on a door. It's not mandatory, but it can be. There's a list, I'm happy to get it for you, but there's a list of establishments that the state set forth in its statute, and then, on a voluntary basis with the sticker, you can make a declaration.
And that would basically cover all of our public buildings in the village?
We, we, yes, we have.
Yes.
I mean, other than those related to law enforcement.
Okay, and then individual homes and businesses as well?
Subject to certain regulation, yeah, and there's, it's, it's part of the Concealed Carry Act, and indicates where you can and cannot conceal carry.
Thank you.
There's regulations, when you say homes, certain regulations are different for apartment buildings and condominiums versus individual, single-family residences, but it's set forth in statute.
I actually, there is, I have a question. A number of speakers have mentioned the possibility of gun registration on a blank slate. That would be appealing, seems obvious, but it's not a, you know, I'll ask you, it's not a blank slate. Could Glencoe have a requirement that people who have guns register them with us?
No, it cannot. Not under state, I mean, it's very clear, the state of Illinois specifically stated that the registration, it also indicates regulation, licensing, possession, and registration is within the exclusive jurisdiction of the state. So, Glencoe would not be able to do that.
And, and, you know, is there federal law on whether, under the Second Amendment, you can require registration?
This is Illinois that has adopted this regulation, or it, Illinois didn't prohibit registration, it said it, the state, is the only entity that could provide for registration. And then it, it only has a limited registration process, but that's, that has nothing to do with the Second Amendment, that's a state-of-Illinois action. And your resolution, as drafted, calls on the state to expand that and liberalize it.
So, I think this touches on this notion of home rule, and we've had hours of discussion at the board level about home rule or not, whether to go there or not, and, you know, two of the, of the many opinions, there are two different perspectives. One is, we could remain a non-home rule, but take a more active voice in changing the state, right? There's a responsibility, and there are limitations as a non-home rule, but we also have an obligation, in my opinion anyways, to, to go forth and try and change the state, right? As opposed to becoming a, a home rule with the hope of getting more authority to make local changes. Anyhow, I think it's important to, as some, one of the residents indicated, you know, this notion of home rule and what the authorities are and the powers are, we have spent a lot of time here talking about it, and I think this idea of responsibility to go to the state to drive the changes we want is, is one of the things we can do. We, as a village governing, I know we're a small community of roughly 9,000 people, but we do have a different voice than an individual resident of the state. And I think it's one of the things we can do, is, is take this discussion up to the state. I think we have an obligation to do that. Not only in this discussion, but whatever else we're, we're desiring home rule for, we could also push that into the state if it's good for us.
Thanks. Let me, there was, I think it was Margot Flanagan said, why don't you guys think about home rule, so maybe we could do something about guns? I think technically, as I understood, the village attorney, the window for doing that closed, so even if we subsequently became home rule, I don't think we could do anything under the current state law, that they could change the state law. However, you know, the village board has always been thinking about home rule, there are different views on it. My views are not a secret. When I was on the village board 35 years ago, I was in favor of it. We had a referendum, and we got creamed. Now, the world has changed since then. All of our neighbors are now home rule, and, you know, I think it might have a different result. When I ran for president, I was asked, when I was interviewed by the caucus, what my position on home rule was, and I said, I'm for it. So, you know, but that doesn't mean that everybody else is for it, and we'll have to think about that, but I, I suspect that even if we became home rule, that would not dramatically increase our ability to do stuff under the current state law. We can, you know, and we are planning on asking the state to, to do more, to let us do more. Who is, like I said, we have a, a resolution, which I like, and is there anybody that wants, and, and so I'm not asking for changes in it, I, I think the resolution doesn't, sort of, as drafted, doesn't cover all of the points that were made tonight. I think we can't fix that for tomorrow's vote, it would be too hard, but I would, you know, pledge to keep talking to the citizens of Glencoe who gave us these ideas, and to the, and to the extent we can execute them ourselves in terms of safety and education, we're going to work towards doing that, I think, and to the extent it requires going to the state for more, or the, our federal representatives for more, you know, we'll keep talking about it, and if we need to do another resolution, I'm for that.
Sorry, one more thing. Sorry, John. So, I guess I'll just ask, would it not, I don't know exactly what the delta is between what we heard tonight and what is in the resolution, I don't know it point by point, but is it worth waiting a month to the next board meeting to, and make the corrections?
No, we can't, you know, so, we could, I mean, so I was trying to make a list of ideas, and, you know, the question, you know, what can we, what can we do on school safety and secure gun storage? And I'm not, you know, I, like I said, I'm not sure that we have, we can't do it, so, and I don't know whether we can ask the, you know, whether we can ask the, we can ask the state, and I don't know the extent to which you would hold up under the current Supreme Court, and maybe I don't, you know, you have to ask and find out.
If I may, President Ron, the, the resolution as drafted does have a specific provision that calls upon the state and federal government to enact legislation mandating the safe storage of firearms as a condition for firearm ownership. It also requires, it calls on the state to enact stricter rules for the issuance of FOID cards, which, which gets to the registration, and to more rigorously screen applicants for FOID cards, and make more comprehensive use of clear and present danger reporting data in connection with the review of FOID cards. That's, that's our, our pro.
It's there, you know, it's not as specific as some of the things we heard tonight, but we'll have, you know, we're going to be asking the state and federal government to fix this stuff, and we'll keep talking with them. Okay, and there you go.
Howard, one more.
Yeah.
So, I think the resolution should just be a start. I think it's a very good start to put out publicly our views on gun safety, gun regulation. But to the point of the burden being on us, I think that's as valid as it could be, and this is step one. I think we have to make step two, three, so kids, people, don't feel like we are helpless, that we are doing something, and the resolution should just be step one.
Well said, well said.
I think you said, just add to that, and so I agree, trustee, about this being step one, and I had mentioned to Village Manager Corrali and President Ron that while, you know, I certainly struggle to see why we have machine guns in society, that I thought this was something that needed, the real thing to me was, was around handguns, right? That, you know, I, I... That, you know, I had suggested, you know, as step two, step three, if we want to look at, is mandatory sentencing for illegal gun ownership. You know, I'm a legal gun owner. My gun's registered. I have a FOID card. So, to me, if I was to somehow get caught with a gun that's not mine, I should go to jail, full stop. Right? And it might be difficult to get consensus around that, but I think if we're going to really tackle this problem, you know, 99% of shootings are done with handguns. So, you know, when I was mugged in Chicago, they didn't point an AR-15 at me, they pointed a handgun. The Virginia Tech shooter, anyone that knows anything about guns, you could, I don't know, Chief Lindowski, you could change, you can change a 15-round clip and a 9mm in two seconds. So, I mean, you know, I think the assault rifle ban is great, but I think it is a first step, and I think there needs to be much more, and if we're going to get really serious about this.
Thank you.
Maybe not for this resolution tomorrow. I'd like to pass it tomorrow.
Let me say thank you for that, and let me say, we have in this resolution a reference to handguns. And, you know, I, you know, I don't know any of the people who were shot in Highland Park, but I personally know, knew four people who were murdered with guns. It was all handguns. One of them, who was one of my partners, he was next door to me in the office, he was one of the best lawyers in the world, leading Supreme Court advocate. He was Sam Alito's boss of the Secret General's office, and he was shot dead by his goofy brother-in-law, who should never have had a gun. So, I would love to do, you know, yes, we need to do something about handguns. It's just, and so, we've included in the resolution, it's obviously a harder lift because of the current, you know, configuration of one of our political parties and the current configuration of the Supreme Court and the justices on the Supreme Court. And regardless of whether I think their jurisprudence is egregiously wrong, which I do, you know, whether they care about me. But yes, so, yeah, we're talking about guns, and I think, one of the things I've learned from the anti-abortion folks is just because the Supreme Court says no, doesn't mean they won't eventually change and say yes. So, we should keep pushing the envelope to the extent we can. And so, and like I said, our resolution does refer to handguns, even though all of us know that it's a much harder lift under the current regime. Anybody else? Okay, well, look, thank you to the board for thinking about this. We're going to have this resolution on our agenda for tomorrow night. And thank you very much for all of our residents with different experiences, different views. You've helped us, and we're doing our best to represent you and to amplify your voice going forward, in the hope that none of us, you know, have to be in the situation like Highland Park or the mini Highland Parks. Does anybody have anything else? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Now, let's have a vote, a voice vote. All in favor?
Yes.
Yep.
Aye.
As the motion carries, thank you, everybody.